Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council meeting of April 23rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. Would anybody like to say an invocation? I see no hands, so please join me in a member, a moment of silence, please. Will you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is approval of minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
You want to say the date, please, for the record? The city attorney likes...
Yes, of March 7th, 2019.
Thank you. Any discussion or corrections? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations. You had, you want to make that announcement now, or?
Yes, Mayor.
There's nothing on the special.
Right. Yes, Mayor, thank you. Regarding case number 2016 CA 016579, the city recently has negotiated a settlement of that case. We didn't have the documents in time to get into your automated agenda, so I'd like to amend the agenda tonight to put approval of settlement in that case number under your new business this evening.
Counsel, I have a motion to that.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, say, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Boards and commissions.
Yes, sir. Per Resolution Number 1-2017, the Student Advisory Council must annually provide a report to the City Council during the April meeting that discusses the issues that, in which present solutions. The Student Advisory Council also provide recommendations on their 2019 and 2020 successors. So the floor is yours. Welcome to the City Council meeting.
All right. Good evening. Name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, Counsel. I'm Simon Rezkar from Student Advisory Council. And first off, I'd just like to thank all the council members and all the city staff and high school advisors for their encouragement and support in all our endeavors. And then I'd like to introduce the council members. First off, we have Emma Milbert from Astronaut High School.
Please raise your hands, so we know who you are.
They're not, they're not all here, but... Josiah Johnson, which is not here. Taylor Batson, also not here. And Emily Ellis, also not here, all from Astronaut. And then from MBHSA, North Brevard Homeschool Association, we have me, Simon Rezkar. Isaac Gutman, I don't think he's here. And Benjamin Hamilton. And then from Titusville High School, we have Diamond Washington. Isabella Almanana. Caleb Phillips. And Jacob Phillips. And I will let them give you a detailed report of all our projects.
Okay.
And our next member up will be Isabel Almanana.
Come right...
Hi, guys.
Young people.
I'm Isabel Almanana. I'm a part of the Student Advisory Council. I am the junior representative from Titusville High School. And I'm going to be talking today to you guys about the mock City Council meeting, which we eventually substituted with the long table event. So at the beginning of the 2018-2019 term, we, as a council, discussed whether or not we wanted to hold a mock City Council project, or if we wanted to research into different projects that we could host instead. All of the members of the council envisioned, envisioned an event that various people could come together and discuss their opinions on the city of Titusville. And with, after discussing and agreeing and disagreeing, we came to a consensus that we wanted to host the longest table event. And one of the great things about hosting this event was that the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce had already hosted this event in 2018. So basically, all we had to do next was contact the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And after we did that, we teamed up. We hosted the longest table event on Friday, February 15th, 2019, in the Julia Street parking lot. To break the ice, the, well, our council chose a variety of questions that the attendees could ask each other. For example, what do you love about your city and what makes your city unique? With these questions, conversation broke out during the longest table event, and I know some of you guys were there as well. And basically, we were just hoping to help our city to create a long-lasting and a tight-knit community that will invoke conversation and the growth of Titusville in the years to come. So for our recommendations, we decided that in 2020, we will be hosting...
Move over just a little bit.
The longest table...
No, no, with microphone.
Yeah, sorry. You know, I didn't want it in my face. There we go. So for our recommendations, we decided that we were going to host the longest table event again in 2020 with the Chamber of Commerce. And we hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Caleb Phillips. I am the sophomore representative from Titusville High School, and I am talking about the Drink, Drive, Die webpage that our council works on. So this project has been going on for an exuberant amount of years now, so we have a brief history outlined on the front of it that I'm not going to read through. So on the back, we have a summary. A quick summary, though, is several years ago, our community had a loss. We had several individual teenagers die in an alcohol-related drunk-driving accident. So from there and then, the city, along with the Student Advisory Council, has had a project taken on where we tried to prevent and, reach out and prevent more further deaths from alcohol-related injuries in automotive accidents. So this council continues to work and provide on this website. In the recent years, we've continued to make visual appearance changes to the website, to make it more pleasing to the eye, as well as more visual with the information that is provided. Luckily, this coming year, we are getting close to a census year, so we'll have more statistics and more up-to-date statistics about what we can do and what can be presented out to the public about what's going on. As well as, the website has continued to update with new ADA-compliant regulations. So the website is now up-to-date with ADA-compliant regulations, as well as we continue to look forward to expanding this website to include other dangers of driving. In the last 11 years this project has gone on, other dangers to driving activities such as texting and other sources has caused much more danger to drivers, and especially teenage drivers today. So in the recommendations for moving forward, we recommend to continue to improve this page, as well as to make it more encompassing to other dangers in driving today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Diamond Washington. I am from Titusville High School, and I am a senior representative. So this, from October 2018, our council decided to participate in the Florida League of Cities Menace Pool Youth Competition. Members Phillips, Malazi, Rezkar, and Almanana, and I took on the challenge to help with the direction of our fellow student council. Members, on the topic of the video was to, was to promote what makes our city great. After a few months of writing the scripts and everyone working together, we were able to pull together a nice video, and the video can be found under the Student Advisory Council on the Titusville page or on YouTube.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello. I'm Benjamin Hamilton from MBHSA, the homeschool. I'm the ninth-grade representative. And I am, and I've come to talk about our partner with the local high schools for a community service project. So in the 2017-2018, following the damages and hardships from Hurricane Michael in the Panhandle, we decided that we were going to send canned foods and hygiene products and like, small like stuffed animals up to help the refugees and survivors of the hurricane. We... In 2018, we were making preparations to transport any of the donations that we had received, but that was sort of a logistics challenge, and we were unable to complete it. But in April of 2019, we still had a strive to complete this task, and we set forth a goal in the 2018-2019 council to participate in a food drive competition amongst the schools and donate to the Titusville community. At the beginning of our term, this goal required our council to develop a, sort of a working plan, and appoint some more, some more coordinators and work with outside sources and people within the council to sort of get this completed and, you know, just get it done in a good manner. I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. Take your time, son. That's okay.
So yeah, we just worked over many weeks to sort of develop a plan to get this done. So our first, our first target was to collect donations at a Titusville High School and Astronaut High School football game on November 2nd, 2018. With, we didn't have much time to sort of prepare and get advertising ready for this event, so it wasn't as successful as we would hoped. It was, we didn't really get much donations, and it was, we felt that we could have done better. So our, so finally, our council was successful with organizing a plan to collect donations during our second scheduled target, which was a baseball game between Astronaut and Titusville High School. And this was on March 29th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. And during this, during this baseball game, we, before the game, we collected plenty of donations, and we felt that our council had finally, had finally succeeded in this task.
Next up. Thank you, sir.
Hello. I am Jacob Phillips, and I am the freshman from DHS. So in summary, one of our last goals, part of this council, was to discuss and prioritize two to four concerns or issues for each year. For this reason, this year's Student Advisory Council suggests the following goals be forwarded to the 2019-2020 Student Advisory Council for their consideration. The first one is to hold a leadership seminar for students and other, and other people. The second is to participate or organize a beach cleanup. Third, to support the Chamber of Commerce with the hosting the 2020 longest table event. And lastly, to improve the Drink, Drive, Die webpage and initiate, sorry, related projects such as updating the 2008 Last Dance prom video. Once again, we wish to thank everyone for his or her support during this term, and we wish the next council an even better year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others? I don't know if we missed anybody. No? Okay, well...
You have a card on this item as well, sir.
All right. Call a card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points ahead of him. I'm a professional engineer. I have approached the Student Advisory Council before. I'm not sure of any of these people, but it was information I was not allowed to submit. I'm cautioning the students is that you don't want to ask, and I want to say is that, is that right now, is that what you are involved in is activities and projects that are programmed not to ask embarrassing questions of the city. Understand, when you become older and you become an employee of the city and you ask the wrong questions, you can get fired. Two questions that, that you don't want to ask. One is, what is the purpose of box coves under I-95? The question is related to city's policy not to have floodways, canals maintained outside of city limits, which is a violation of, of ordinances, it's a violation of common sense, and so forth. And that, it's, it's something that our council has, has deception, dishonesty, and they also have, well, let me go do a second question. The second question, I would say, is, don't answer the question. Since city has hired numerous, numerous engineers over the years that produce calculations that shows that the flood zone elevations on our flood zone maps are incorrect, why didn't they go ahead and change the flood zone elevations? That's beginning in, for example, for Baker subdivision, they, they had calculations done in 1985, 1992, 1997, and 2010. All these were completely ignored, and they did not, they not, did not tell the public. And so, let's say, in 2016, finally, 2016, they finally changed the flood zone elevation to be the same as it was calculated in 1985. So you don't ask, you don't ask the question, why did it take 31 years to change the flood zone elevation in Baker subdivision? Another similar question can be asked is, why haven't they changed the flood zone elevation in Parkland Estates, which also, they have information that it's also incorrect? These questions you don't want to ask because this council right now is, they don't answer my questions, they don't return my phone calls, and it's been going on for quite a while. And what I consider this is to be, is what we have is one of the worst city governments that I've ever known before in my life. And I've lived here for 47 years. So this is what you have, and be careful because someday you'll be employed, and what they want to do is, is that they want to get somebody who's going to cooperate, keep your mouth shut, and just do what you're told. So anything?
Your time is almost up, sir.
Time is almost up. So in this case, as I've asked the city manager to resign, I've asked for, if he doesn't resign, I've asked the city council to fire him because he started out...
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you. Do you have more time?
You have no shame, sir. This is, for these young people, you, you take your problem, and it is your problem, Mr. Johnston, out on them. I think that is, again, despicable. Member Stokoe.
I just wanted to say, I am super impressed and proud of you guys. I remember back at my age, I don't think I would have spoke up there at all. It's very nerve-wracking to get up there and intimidating, and I'm just so proud of what you guys are doing and that you care and you're wanting to get involved. And it makes me very happy to see the younger people getting involved. It makes me excited for our future. So I just want to say thank you so, so much. You are very much appreciated.
Very good. Vice Mayor.
Well, most of you know how proud I am of you. There's a few of you that if you don't ask them, they'll tell you. Very proud of you guys, and like Member Stokoe just said, it's pretty amazing to get up there and speak like you did. And unfortunately, you got to see a side of city government, so it's kind of like a little field trip you just took. You got an opportunity to understand that, that we're going to have people out there that, as Mayor put so well, no shame, are going to say things that just are totally inappropriate and take away from your time. So I'm going to say to you, I thank you for being here. You're going to do great things, and you're doing great things, and I'm proud of you. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
I would agree with the others, but I have a question for you. So what is your favorite thing about Titusville? Ooh. What do you like about Titusville? Yeah.
He said, "The really homey feel." You're, you're not on the microphone, so nobody else can hear you, but...
Yeah. The homey feel.
Great.
Yep.
Anyone else like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Right ahead. Jump, jump in.
The just collaboration between nature and, like, modern technology. Like, we have the amazing wildlife refuge out here where we can see nature, and then we have the cutting-edge space race moving on, moving us on to new eons and new generations.
That's just cool.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I don't see anybody.
This lady is, this lady is considering.
No.
Yeah, she is. Yeah, she's smiling. She might as well.
Would you like to? Okay. All right. So you're reading things into...
Our, our city council is always very welcoming to our committee, and it's very awesome.
Absolutely. We're all very proud of you.
Yes, very proud of you.
Member Jordan.
Thank you, sir. I've been in the education business for a very long time, and I'm always, always amazed at how smart our kids are growing up. You know, there's, there's a lot of challenges in this world, and we're looking forward to you all taking your place out in the world and helping us with all these challenges, for sure. You're a good example and a diverse example of what education can do for our kids, and I'm totally, totally just touched. The spirit that you all have, especially you, the spirit that you all have, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna do great things in this world, and I just wish you all, you all, all the blessing and luck in the world to just be the best that you possibly can be, because you are America, and we need you in America to help us with some of our challenges. So well done tonight, and I wish you all well in the future.
I will echo all of that, and especially the part about, do the best that you can do and the best that you can be, and you will succeed. Believe me, I was in business and had hundreds of employees, and I can tell you, the people who stand out are those who do the best job they can all the time, and they, they're the ones that get the promotions, too. So keep that in mind. With that, I will entertain a motion to accept the Student Advisory Council annual report.
I'll make a motion to accept the Student Advisory Annual Report.
Your mic's not even on, sir.
Doesn't matter, I'm an loud guy.
What he said.
What he said.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any further comments? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. City Manager. If you would like to leave, don't feel you have to stay. I'm sure you have other things you'd like to do, but if you would, that's fine.
All the two of you. The scholarship program policy provides for the city council to award a scholarship in the amount of $250 for each year the student actively participates on the Titusville Student Advisory Council. In accordance with the policy, at the March 12th, 2019 city council meeting, council approved the expenditure of $1,653.84 and directed staff to forward the pending disbursement forms to the city manager and finance for preparation of scholarship check. In 2018 and 19, three seniors qualified for the scholarship in accordance with scholarship policies. Emma Milbert of Astronaut High School will be awarded a $500 scholar, or award. Ashley Malazi of North Brevard Homeschool Association, $653.84. And Diamond Washington of Titusville High School, a $500 award. And Mayor, I have the checks. If you'd like to go down and present, we've got the camera ready for your presentation.
That would make me stay, too.
And I think the mayor's going to ask for all of you to come up by the podium so we can get a picture of all of you.
Some of you go on that side of the podium, I'll stand in the back.
Tossed ones in the back.
Tossed ones in front. You're getting a little taller, don't you?
And Moms, you can, you can move around and take pictures if you want.
Couple of you come over here. And I'll stand back here because everybody can see it. Great. Thanks again. Thanks for coming, and thanks for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
We have one card on item B, please.
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I want to congratulate you graduates, and I mean that you're going to be graduating soon. I also got a scholarship when I graduated from high school, and I graduated honors, Talbada Pa Engineering Honorary Society and so forth. I just wanted to share a little bit with you, is that I think it'd be nice if you stuck around for a few minutes and heard what I'm going to say at petitions and requests from the public present. It may have to do with what, what happens to you in, in your future, and what happens to the city of Titusville. That, in addition to having a scholarship, I also, I'm a professional engineer with, and a professional land surveyor, and as a professional engineer, I'm, I'm also...
Are you talking to us or to them?
Okay, I need to talk to you. Okay.
You do.
Sorry, sorry.
Actually, you don't need to, but you probably will.
Okay, all right. Well, let me just cut it short, and is that, thank you for, for awarding this to the, these students, and I hope that they'll, they'll be successful, and they'll find that there'll be some truth and more honesty here in the city council. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Yes, sir. This is the Student Advisory Council membership for the upcoming year. It's recommended that the proposed slate of students be appointed to the 2019-2020 Student Advisory as nominated and appointed by the prospective schools in accordance with Resolution 1-2017. Currently, there are no names that we have, have been received from Astronaut High School. Following the receipt of the names, staff will forward to, to the city council for confirmation. From the North Brevard Homeschool Association, four, it'll be 12th grade Simon Rezkar, 11th grade Isaac Gutman, Gutman, I think?
Gutman.
10th grade Ben Hamilton, and 9th grade Alicia Demicki. From Titusville High School, 12th grade Isabella, and I'm not going to even try that one. There you go. 11th grade Caleb Phillips, 10th grade Jacob Phillips, and 9th grade Adrian Spur. And so we'll just need you to confirm their appointments, sir.
Very good. I have a motion.
And before you do, sir, we have a card on this item.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points ahead of him. I'm congratulating these, these appointments, and that I'm hopeful that they will stick around for, for some, some negative comments that I will have regarding the deception, dishonesty, malice, and injury to the public that this council is, is producing. So that's what I want to share with you, and I'm looking forward to speaking at petitions and requests. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll accept a motion to...
Move to confirm the proposed slate of students as members of the 2019-2020 Student Advisory Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Jordan, I think you were first on that one. Sorry. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Planning and zoning commission appointments. Regular members, Arlene Baker, have been absent for three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Baker was unable to attend the regular meeting on April 3rd, 2019, at which time the commission... commission reviewed Ms. Baker's written request for a six-month leave of absence. The Planning and Zoning Commission requested the action be taken to allow Ms. Baker to continue to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission and authorize the leave of absence for six months, period, from April 2019 to September 2019. Additionally, regular member Robert Chevere has been absent from four meetings out of the past six regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Chevere did not appear at the regular meeting on April 3, 2019, at which time the commission reviewed Mr. Chevere's verbal request for a waiver of absences. The Planning and Zoning Commission requested the action be taken to allow Mr. Chevere to continue serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'd suggest we handle them individually. Would anybody like to speak on this issue?
Oh, okay. Who's looking at me? So, I guess my, I'm curious as to why these individuals have been absent so much. I think it's important for the members to be there, especially for planning and zoning. My understanding is Arlene Baker has been taking care of her husband and that's the reason for her request. I'm not sure about member Cheve...
Chevier.
Chevier, excuse me. I don't know why I can't do that. And I don't know if staff is aware of why he was absent.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Oops, wait a second, I have it. Member Jordan.
Thank you. I got a concern about both of them, but since you want to take them separately, no matter what the excuse is, six months is a long time not to be on planning and zoning and I really would suggest, if it's possible, if there is a person who's secondary, I can't remember what you call it, to take alternate, thank you, have them as primary and then put this person as the alternate. That would be my suggestion in my motion, if that's possible.
I don't really know.
One of the issues, we don't know if the alternates want to be primary.
Well, I understand that, but I just don't think she should be primary right now with, you know, six months is a long time in my mind, for sure. So I guess, so if our option is only to agree or disagree, is that, or appoint or agree with her six month or not agree with it, is that...
Correct. That's before you, you could also table if you're not ready to make a decision.
Okay, I don't think there's a rush, right? When's the next planning and zoning meeting?
It's in May.
I think it's May.
I believe it's May the 6th or May the 7th, but it's the...
It's the Wednesday.
The Wednesday before. I don't have that date in front of me, but I think it's the 6th.
Okay, if it's good with council, I would move that we table this.
Eight, is that the date?
They table it until they can have a conversation. Can't do that either, or what?
No, I'd suggest, because of the way the code is written, they're off unless you excuse it. So you can authorize them to serve at the next meeting if there's a meeting before your... So if you want to table, but authorize them to continue to serve until your next meeting.
Yes, that's my motion. To authorize them to continue until the next meeting and then find out if there's an alternate who would be the primary to take the place and then bring it back to us.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next person? Okay, everybody, I guess everybody still wants to talk. You still have your light on.
I know. I want to talk on that one, too. Okay, the second one, do we have any idea what's going on here or no?
No.
I would move that we don't agree to his request. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'd sort of like to table that also and find out the specifics of why he is missing so much. I think that's something we should, somebody should have asked him, is if you've got a medical problem, is there some reason you're not here?
I thought we had a history.
I think there, well, he has a long history with the board. Been on about 14 years and I don't know what the exact problem was, but there was some sort of a problem.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's why I was moving, but if it's good with council, then we'll just table it until the next meeting he continues to and we find out exactly what's going on there.
And he has to be approved for the next meeting as well or authorized?
Yes, sir.
That's what I said. Yeah, authorized for the next meeting.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
There is discussion? Go right ahead.
I was just going to, with Member Jordan, I kind of like the direction he's going in. I agree with tabling because I feel like, in a sense, if we were to say, you know what, we don't want to excuse this member, I think our culture here has been to excuse members continuously. And Member Jordan, this is prior to you getting on, where we have agreed to absences and so I feel like we kind of created that culture and I'd like to see that culture shift a little bit, which is why I kind of appreciate you coming and saying, you know, hey, if you're not serving, let's look at and see why. So I would like to see either explanation or, which we're flexible with, but I do want people to take it serious. I think it's a very serious board. I think there's other people that would appreciate being on the board, serving, but I'd like to see us kind of go in that direction a little bit.
I'd like to add something to that, too. What we have done in the past, as far as, as long as I've been on the council, is to approve somebody in advance to have a period of time off for whatever reason. I think this is one of the first times that I can remember actually looking at taking people off for it, so we don't, the culture isn't quite what you described.
Okay, no, you're correct, with the excusing in advance, but excusing nonetheless. And so I don't want to them thinking, hey, we've excused people proactively, it shouldn't be an issue.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure that nuances. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'm for tabling because we don't know, you know, and I'm for tabling both because we don't know. My next question is, why don't we know? It really is. It's like I'm surprised.
Right.
Because I will say, and Member Stokel, I agree with your concern that they need to take it serious. I think they do, but my memory is whenever we excused anybody, we knew. We knew there was a cancer situation, a heart attack situation, and I would approve them again with that. But that being said, I don't think we've ever approved anybody without any information and in this case, we have no information, which is why we're not approving.
I have to, again, comment, there is information and, but because apparently nobody else is aware of it, I'm ill at ease to talk about it and not let them come forth on it as well.
Then I would just comment...
But there are circumstances.
And I believe there, that's what I'm certain there are, or they wouldn't be doing this. What I'm getting at is previously, we knew them. And for some reason, unless it's just kind of a personal, private thing, they don't want people to know about, that's fine. I'm just saying that previously, we knew about them. In this case, we don't and so I don't want to kick them off and I'd like to hear more.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we have a...
I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
I guess the concern I have and I think Member Stokel kind of feels what I'm feeling. We've got a lot of stuff going on in the city and there are things that happen in a person's life where they can't serve and the long-term absences, in my mind, hurts the city because you've got five members on the planning and zoning, if I remember right, right? And if that's the case, you get, or is it seven? So now you've got six, so you could end up in a deadlock on certain things, for sure. And it's a lot of dynamics that's on the planning and zoning, too, so certainly like to know as soon as possible and we definitely want, and you know, we definitely appreciate when people say they want to serve on the commission, but you know, life happens and we just need to make sure we're cognizant that we got to go forward with the business of the city.
Vice Mayor.
City manager or city attorney, in discussion, there's an alternate that steps up. They're not sure the person.
We have one alternate, but we've not inquired as to if that member wants to be a regular member or not.
Well, even if they're not a regular member, would they not step up when that person's absent?
Yes, sir.
So we won't be in a 3-3 deadlock. It would be seven people on that planning and zoning because that's why we have alternates. Okay, I like the tabling thing and let's hear more, but I'd like to hear more in the future that we don't have to table it.
As part of the discussion on this, I would also add to make sure that everybody gets the same information on what circumstances are, I guess, as to some situation like that. Did you, I see you reaching for something? No, okay. I thought he was going for his button there. Yeah, it just, I think everybody should be informed before these things happen, so. Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, like, sign passes unanimously.
Currently, the North Brevard Library District has two vacancies with unexpired terms to expire on September 30, 2019. There's one application on file for your consideration. Mr. Robert Barrows has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board. His application is part of your packet.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Member Jordan.
I move to approve Mr. Robert Barrows to the North Brevard Library District Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next, petitions and requests. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville, Florida. And as you know, I'm going to talk about your refusal to return my calls. I made numerous calls every day now for close to three weeks to Virginia Blaylock to free to return my call and I've sent many emails. So anyhow, let me give you a question. Why did it take 31 years for the city of Titusville to correct a flood zone elevation in Baker's subdivision? In 1985, we had calculations done by professional engineers that said it was 18.9 feet rather than 20 feet, putting about 50 houses in the flood zone elevation. Not only that, and it was also shown the elevations was wrong by our, by professional engineers hired by the city in 1992, 1997, and 2010. So why didn't somebody wake up and change the flood zone elevation corrected? Council opposed it in 2012, 2013, 2014, until there was a letter sent by city manager to FEMA and FEMA said, hey, there's nonsense here. Let's see you do some calculation. They did calculation. You hired somebody in 2015, 2016, they come up with a value of 18.9 feet, the same elevation that was calculated in 1985. So why did it take 31 years? You don't want to answer that question because it will expose what you're doing, deception, dishonesty, and concealment of information from the public, injury to the public, in this case, and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, all of you are guilty of something else and that we're doing the same thing in Parkland... Sir, would you keep your voice down? It's very disturbing. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you, Walt. We have Parkland Estates subdivision, same situation, calculations done in 1985, disagree. Now it's, what is it, 35 years later? Still haven't been corrected or 34 years later? Why is that? Because we have a corrupt government. We don't do it. You don't listen to me, you don't listen to other people, you don't listen to the petitions. We have had petitions for Parkland Estates and yet, yet I'm ashamed of you guys. This is a city of shame, shysters, and fools. And, excuse me, I raised my voice. I've been a fool for listening to your engineers and the people have misled me, including Sean Stauffer and your city manager. You're like puppets on strings. You listen to what he says and that's what you do, instead of thinking, well, you need to represent the people. You're injuring the people, continuing right now, and I'm looking forward to you going to court and you getting smashed. Thank you. I have a question for you. Yes, sir. You were on city staff at one point, were you not? Yes. And what was your job? I was in public works. And did you have an engineering degree at that time? Absolutely. Professional engineer, professional... Why didn't you come forward with that information? I didn't know it. I didn't know it. Well, nobody else did either, I guess, or it isn't real. That's the other possibility. Yes, they did. That's the, all the questions I asked you was to, you answered. Okay, well, they knew it. Sir? I didn't. Next item, please.
On to consent agenda items. Council, we have two consent agenda items. Does any council member wish to pull any of those items?
See no one?
We have two cards. We have one for each item. I'll go ahead and read the consent agenda items for the record and, Mayor, there is a resolution, so you will require a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda item 8A, approved resolution 14, 2019, commending the outstanding students from the North Brevard area schools for the school year 2018 and 2019. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the budget amendment transferring $4,500 from the fire department operating budget into the project account required to complete the project and purchase of SCBA equipment and respiratory fit testing system from 10-8 Equipment in Bradenton, Florida in the amount of $363,573.8 and authorize the city manager to put in place the instruments necessary for these acquisitions.
Okay, clerk, read the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
And just as a reminder to council, as Mr. Johnston's coming up, the award ceremony for the students that the resolution is for is on May 1 at 6:00 PM at Titusville Auditorium, Titusville High Auditorium.
Thank you. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I might be there for that presentation, but I have nothing else to add to that. Thank you. All the next card, please, for the next item.
Stan Johnston.
Oh, you did both of them, okay. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, item B, request to purchase the SCBA. It looks like a lot of money. If we got this kind of money, it looks like you could hire an engineer to oppose me and you do have the money. You don't want to expend it because, because it'll expose, expose the deception, dishonesty by this council. Thank you. Council, you've read the items, right, sir? Yes. We need a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items 8A and 8B.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Roll call vote, please, clerk. God bless you.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item?
Yes, Mayor. Next item is ordinances second reading, public hearing, and related action, item 9A, which is comprehensive plan amendment number one, 2019, increasing density in downtown mixed use uptown sub-district. This comprehensive plan amendment contains ordinance number 18, 2019, as well as ordinance number 19, 2019. I'd like to read both ordinances at this time and then you will vote on each ordinance separately. Ordinance number 18, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by adopting comprehensive plan amendment one, 2019, amending policy 1.21.1 of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan relating to increasing the maximum residential density in the downtown mixed-use land use uptown sub-district from 20 dwelling units per acre to 30 dwelling units per acre, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 19, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending the density criteria in the uptown sub-district of the downtown mixed-use DMU by amending chapter 28, section 28, 324, downtown mixed-use DMU SMART code, by amending the maximum residential density in the uptown sub-district from 20 dwelling units per acre to 30 dwelling units per acre, by adding clarifying language, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency recommended... The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency recommended approval 7-0. The comprehensive plan amendment 2019-01 proposes to amend policy 1.21.1 of the future land use element by changing the maximum residential density from 20 dwelling units per acre to 30 dwelling units per acre within the downtown mixed-use land designation. Ordinance 19, 2019 proposes to amend section 28, 234, downtown mixed-use smart code, intensity and dimensional standards, density uptown sub-district from 20 units per acre to 30 units per acre in the zoning chapter of the city's land development code. The proposed amendments are consistent with the recommended land development regulations. The amendment of the city of Titusville Economic Strategic Plan was adopted on January 2017. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Do you have any comments you would like to make first? All right. Counsel, anybody have any questions for Ms. Busaka? See none?
We have one card on the item.
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I have some concerns about this because in the 70s, 80s, and I guess part of the 90s, is that when we had an issue like this come before the city council, this, this would, this place would be packed. Be packed because, because people were saying is that we don't want these high-rise buildings. We don't want high density, and in fact, is we reduced the density, of course, during, well, during Truman Scarborough's to a considerable amount. So now we're going to, from, we're going to, to 30 dwelling units a unit if we, if we pass this. And if you notice what happened at Park Avenue property across from Central Park is that it was rezoned to a PD, a new designation. And this PD designation does something different. It changed that 103 units to 255 units. And if you remember what happened is that, is that expert testimony from the two people who are representing the property represented at 255, Mr. Jordan also said 255 or 254, whatever it was. So, so that was corrected by Mrs. Busaka when she got the spreadsheet out of the calculators, the density. Now, I don't know what's happening with this NC density, whether it's going to be the same thing or not, because these are new things that I don't know, I'm not sure what, if you see them or not. But it's not only a changing of density units in some areas, you know, maybe there's no wetlands and flood zones in this area, but it can substantially change this, and the fear of some people is that this is going to be similar to what happened in Miami, will turn into a little Miami with high-rises, and it blocked the view of the sky. So it's going to be your choice. I would, I would hope it'd be much better known to the people because from my experience, there would be a lot of people objecting to this, this ordinance who are not here tonight. So I'm here to answer any questions about this, and I'm concerned also about the parking in these particular areas. I know that there was a six, proposal for a $6 million parking garage in the downtown area, and I'm not looking forward to a parking garage. But, so that's, that's all I have, and I don't need to take any of your time on this matter. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I see none.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel discussion. Do I see any discussion on these items? I see none. Closed the public hearing, and I'll take a motion on CPA number 2019-01 and ordinance number 18-2019.
I'd make that motion.
I have a motion.
That's second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stockel.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
I think we need to...
Do the second one.
Do the second one. I'm sorry.
Well, it's all right. I appreciate help, will help back me.
Move to approve ordinance number 19-2019, amending the code of ordinance, ordinances by amending the density criteria in the uptown sub-district of the downtown mixed-use.
Second. I have an em, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stockel.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Ordinances, first reading, we have none. Old business, we have none. On the new business, we have an attorney settlement agreement.
Yes, mayor. Earlier in the meeting, council has amended our agenda tonight to include approval of settlement agreement in case number 2016 CA 016579. This case was handled by the firm of Bell &amp; Roper. Attorney Sherri Sutton handled this case. She is here tonight to discuss that with you and seeking your approval of settlement in that case. As I said, we amended the agenda, so I don't know if there's a card, but we'll take them before you vote.
Good evening, ma'am, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am, as Richard indicated, Sherri Sutton with the firm of Bell &amp; Roper. I represent you as your outside counsel in various litigation matters. We have a litigation matter that has settled. It is Sandra and Robert Jankovic versus the city of Titusville, case number 2016 CA 016579. As part of the settlement agreement, we have made it absolutely clear that the city admits no liability whatsoever, and the settlement has, with, with your blessing, will be agreed to, just really as a, the most effective way to get out from under the litigation. I am here to answer any questions that you might have, but I would request approval of the settlement agreement.
Very good. Thank you. Any, any questions? I see no questions.
We have one card.
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
I'm Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. It's interesting is that I've seen this happen before. In fact, is I didn't know it until, till some years later, is that this is exactly what happened to the property my wife and I purchased, is the city regnigned on their, on deals and so forth, and so that they took development rights away from the property owner, and then they had to give them back. And then what they do, after they sold it to me, they took the property rights again. That's what the city has done. So the city has, has been nefarious in a number of ways, and I'm not sure about this particular case, but the city breaks promises repeatedly. Thank you.
And there are no other cards, I assume? Member Nelson?
Yeah, I spoke to Sherri Monday, yesterday? It seemed like a long time ago.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not crazy about settlement, but I think she's right. Doing this way, doing it this way, the insurance company will be paying it, not us. To do otherwise is going to expose us to liability, that I don't think, I, I don't believe in the merits of the plaintiff's claim. But on the other hand, I also know that when you go to trial, you never know what's going to happen, and that is truly rolling the dice in many cases. So I would say that we need to agree to it.
Yes, ma'am.
I see no other lights, so I concur with you entirely. In business, there were times when I had to make a similar decision, and I called it a business decision, as to whether to make a settlement that you do not agree with as far as the, what is in the, the case. But if you go to a court or go to a jury in particular, there's a penchant to go with the, the big guy is the bad guy, and the individual is always, not always, but often, the one that gets a bigger settlement, and we pay all the costs, and so I totally agree. Any other discussion on this? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move for approval of, do we need to number or just approval of the settlement?
That's sufficient.
That's okay.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next item, whatever it is.
Adoption of local housing incentive plan 2019 for the state housing initiative program, commonly referred to as SHIP. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee held its first meeting on March 5th, 2019, and its final public hearing on April 16th, 2019. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee reviewed the city's, the city's previous adopted housing incentive plan in order to develop the 2019 plan. The overall consensus of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was that the city's current code and regulations were generally adequate, and the previously adopted plan incentives were successfully implemented and working successfully. As a result, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee presented its 2019 plan to council with two ongoing requirement, SHIP incentives. Expedited permitting, number one, and review process for approval, number two. Any changes made by the city council will be incorporated into the final plan before submitting to the Florida, Florida Housing Finance Corporation, along with the amended local housing assistant plan where required. Staff request council's approval for the adoption of the plan as submitted an authorization for the mayor to execute said resolution. Approval will provide the authorization to submit the plan. Additionally, council's actions will be noted in the plan prior to submittal. Terri Franklin is available to answer questions that you may have, and I think she's going to kind of run you through this, this initiative.
Proceed, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to provide one update and clarification. The AHOC was met on Aug., April 16th, but there wasn't a quorum, so they had to reconvene on the 18th, so the documents will be updated to reflect that date. And the, pretty much, the last incentive plan, which was 2015, will be the same plan that you have before you, and as the city manager stated, the two required incentives are again in that plan. The expedited permitting gives a 25% reduction in review time for affordable housing projects, and the ongoing review process provides for a liaison from the P&amp;Z board to serve on the AHOC committee for that.
Any questions? I see none. Are any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville, Florida. Good job, Terri. Thank you. No comments.
Okay. Any counsel, further counsel discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
No real questions, no real discussion, but I wrote it on my margin. I feel like I have to say it. I really need to say good job and thank you, but in my time on the council, which hasn't been tremendously long, I'm always proud of what you guys do in this area. You know, there's a lot of, there's not a lot of people here. It's not something that gets a lot of press. It's not something that gets a lot of fanfare, but you take care of those people, and I appreciate that, and I know that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to the, to the committee.
I think we all would echo that, so, thank you. Okay. Any counsel discussion? There is none? I will accept the motion.
Move to adopt local housing initiative plan as prepared by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for SHIP grant program 2019-2022, and approve the related resolution number 13-2019.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Please.
I have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stockel.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Next item?
The city of Titusville has been approached by Anthony Rubin, Director of Investments, with DLP Capital Partners on creating a public-private partnership with regards to DLP Capital Partners developing three parcels of city-owned land located at 2655 South Washington Avenue and 2709 South Washington Avenue. I think we briefed you up on the basic idea of this public partnership, private partnership to develop the park with them, and all this is advisability to allow staff to continue to engage with Mr. Rubin and his team.
Any discussion on this item?
Yes, sir. Staff did review this with each, each of us individually, and I thought it was a good idea. Actually, it's a, to me, it's a safety thing, but I certainly would like for staff to continue with discussion with them and find out exactly what we can do to go into a partnership with them and maybe even develop that vacant piece of land.
In this case, since there's no other lights, if you'd like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir. Move that we...
We have a card on this item, sir.
Guess I can't make one. I tried so hard.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm questioning where this property is. Is it, is it, is it on the river? It is on the river?
It is on the river.
Is it the river? Is it property that we purchased through, through, and we're going to have, what we're going to have do, we're going to have someone, private development, develop this property that we...
Into a public park.
Into a public park.
They're paying for the park.
That's good this time. Thank you. I have no further comment.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? We have, we have a motion and a second. This is all those...oh, you didn't? Okay, sorry. Go ahead. Approve advisability.
Approve advisability on exploring, entering to... Approve advisability on exploring, entering to a public-private partnership with Dream Space Coast DLP Capital Partners.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like, sign. Passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public. You finally got a laugh out of me, Stan. Okay. Mayor and council reports. You have my written report, council. Is there anybody that would like to make a report at this time?
I wouldn't call it a report. Real short. Just came on Florida Today. I think it's worthy of note. I wish there was somebody here to hear this, but Robert De Niro ate at Pier 220 yesterday.
Really?
Robert De Niro ate at Pier 220 yesterday, and even called ahead for reservations.
Is it a real Robert De Niro?
The real one.
Okay.
If it's not, we got fake news.
It is on today.
Like I said, if it's not, we got fake news, but Robert De Niro in town.
Two of us sitting up here were there the night before. I guess we picked the wrong night with our families.
That is interesting.
We're all gone.
So next is the...yeah.
One, the employee awards picnic. I don't think we had a council meeting since then. I just want to say phenomenal job by entire staff. We are so blessed. It was nice to be there and witness that and see it. It was nice to be there and witness that and see it. Unfortunately, I couldn't stay the whole time because I had to go back to work, but it was, it was nice.
Dawn work.
And then my request on here, it's on page 71, and I don't even know if I can use this request, but the Florida League of Cities sent out, they're doing five different tours of the medical marijuana dispensaries that they're offering for different people within local government to tour. Some police chiefs, elected officials, city managers, city attorneys. So there was one that I wanted to go to, which is why you see this request on here. It's in Winter Haven or Winter Garden, but it is sold out currently. So I'm on the waitlist, but if a spot opens up, I would like to request, it's $60 to go, and I may not even need travel because if I get to go, I'm going to try to ride with somebody that's already going from the city.
Yeah, and just so you know, we do have somebody from the legal department attending, and we will have a couple of police officers there. And they do, would, they would like elected officials to attend if possible.
I know. So, but can we still vote to approve it should a spot open? Is that?
You, yeah.
Can I make that move?
I'll move for the member of Stokel to go to this if it becomes available at a $260.
$60?
Yes.
And I would second that, especially if this member Stokel can't go and I can go in her place.
Wow, that's a friendly amendment.
Just in case you have to work.
There are other dates and different locations, but this is the closest one to our city. And what the league is trying to do is have, in fact, I think there's four dates.
Yeah.
But they're trying to disperse them around the state so the elected officials and the people that they've invited can attend this to understand what this is all about.
So... It's the next closest.
Yeah, let me go ahead and tell you. April 26, Palmetto. May 3, Homestead. May 10 is the Winter Garden one. That's the only one sold out. And then May 17 is a Tallahassee one, which I heard is phenomenal. I can't go on that day, but I heard that one is probably the best one. So if anybody could potentially attend that one, I think you'd be thoroughly impressed to see kind of what's happening, so.
Would you like to amend the motion to put you as an alternate if member Stokel cannot make it?
Well, first, I think I need to figure out what is going on on the 17th.
We can wait.
No, I just leave it like it is.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like, sign. Passes unanimously. City manager?
No, sir. We've got more on the mayor's report, and we have a card on the mayor's report as well, so. Yep.
Okay. So the next item on here, so sometimes at our Florida or Space Coast League of Cities meetings, they'll bring before us different resolutions. Most of the time, they're not very controversial. This one ended up being controversial. It is on page 73 of our agenda packet. Basically, we had one meeting where this kind of was presented to us with no real background information, and so somebody was able to say, hey, you know, can you, we talk about this a little bit more? Long story short, a lot of us were confused. It was our first time seeing it, and they were wanting us to vote on it. This nonprofit corporation came in. They are on page, I think it says, page 74, Citizens Climate Lobby, California, non, not-for-profit corporation. So we said, we motioned to table it and to the next meeting so we could have them come and speak at our following meeting. So that happened. The guy stood up and spoke. This is now, again, my personal opinion of what I felt was happening. He spoke, did not give basically any information on it. It was very awkward. Then there was some discussion. There were some people there, elected officials from other parts of the county that were very much for it and knew they had researched some of it. There were others that were confused. Several thought it was a partisan issue. What hit me personally, and I have not done a lot of research, this was one that I was, I didn't have much information on. It's basically saying it's cost-neutral, which concerns me anytime you hear something like that. And then this other part on page 74 where it says nearly, or so that two-thirds of all households would at least break even. So when you're seeing two-thirds, what's happening with the other third, there was no real education from my perspective. So we voted to bring it back to our local municipalities to kind of bring it back to our councils to see, because I didn't feel comfortable voting on it when it's just me and you guys haven't even seen it. So my personal opinion is I would need to do more research. I'm not really for it. Side note, the guy ended up, when we didn't let him speak anymore, he ended up slamming his chair and stormed out. So really put a bad taste in my mouth to see kind of where he was coming from. But I think where we're at right now, we voted to bring it forth to our councils and then potentially at our next meeting or the meeting thereafter to kind of discuss it at that point. So it's just for information purposes now. If you guys wanted to discuss it at the next meeting, but without your guys' approval and where I'm leaning, I probably would not vote on this at this time. So again, I know it's a lot of information, so feel free to take time, and if you have any questions or concerns or would like to see it or think it's a good thing, I'm open for that discussion. Again, it's just not my area of expertise, and I'm trying to learn more about it, but at this time, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
Member Nelson? You did.
Oh, I did. Okay.
Honest.
Honest?
I saw you do it.
I'm for solar energy and alternative fuels. This is just not something that I feel comfortable with. And I'm not sure how it would work, so I would be opposed to it as it's written. Not that I'm, not that I'm opposed to it, but I am opposed to it.
That's kind of exactly how I was feeling, and several of us in the room, we liked the idea, but it was just presented very awkwardly, quite honestly.
Member Jordan?
I would just say no.
Vice Mayor?
I could say no, but I also want to say it looks partisan to me and with a slant that I would not be for. When I see some of the names in some of the areas, California, I'm opposed.
One of the interesting, I was at the meeting, one of the interesting opening discussions was by the presenter that we only have 12 years to accomplish this. So you did hear some of the rhetoric that's going on in Congress, so they were pretty aggressive about trying to get this resolution passed.
What happens after 12 years?
We all go away.
Well, I have to say, are you through? I mean...
Yes, I'm done.
I have to say, I stand with the rest of you. This energy innovation and carbon dividend, I don't, I didn't understand it at all, so I'm not comfortable voting for it, certainly. But I would say if you get further information and come back with it, we would readdress it, but I don't think we need to do anything tonight.
Yep, that's enough for me.
All right. That works.
But why don't we just ask her to bring it back? It would make sense.
Well, she will.
I will. But I have a feeling there's not going to be anything else that, like I said, they brought in the guy from the group and, correct. So.
Unless it makes sense. Okay. Did you have any? No. All right. She's holding her hand so she doesn't have to see. The, anything else in the city manager's report?
No, sir. You have a card on the mayor's report.
Oh, okay. Call the card, please.
Sir, Stan Johnston submitted for items A and B.
Yeah, I have two cards, so I want to talk to them separately. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. First is the mayor's report, and I think, as you know, I'm going to say again, there's a serious admission, and that is the admission regarding the statements made on February the 12th that are deceptive and dishonest and so forth. And surprise, I have a surprise for you, is that soon, is that the council is going to be presented with expert testimony that questions your extreme prejudice towards this particular issue. So it will be presented as what the unfairness, dishonesty, deception, and your participation in this dishonest engagement of statements made on February the 12th. And it will demonstrate your participation in extreme prejudice towards me and homeowners who have been injured and those who will show the injury in the future. So that's something for you to look forward to. So that concludes my comments on mayor's report. Now may I go into the 10B?
Proceed.
Okay. 10B. You know who I am. You know my address. You know where I am. So on this, that's...
14B, sir.
Excuse me, 14B. So what Sarah has presented, I read that, and I've been watching these videos on carbon footprint, and it's talking about cows have bigger carbon footprint than a lot of these other things that we're thinking about. And then climate change is very still suspect now by experts. And they, we know that the climate is changing, but to say that it's changing because of human activity compared to other things is, for example, carbon dioxide and what it affects has upon the heating up of our earth compared to water vapor is, water vapor is even far more significant. So this resolution has to do with taxing this carbon fees and so forth for questionable, ambiguous needs, so I want to share with you is that I have serious questions about its authenticity. Thank you.
Okay. City attorneys report?
Let me go ahead and do mine real quick, sir. We have one action item. The budget process is approaching rapidly. We've got some proposed primary and secondary dates for the budget workshop, first hearing, second and final public hearing. So if you could take a look at your calendars and come to a consensus on which days those will be.
I did. I'm available on both August 14th and 15th. We going one at a time or?
Yes, sir. However you'd like to do it.
Okay.
I would prefer the 14th if possible because the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference starts the next day on the 15th, so.
Anyone else?
So we'll go with the 14th at 5:00 PM for the budget workshop?
Yes, sir.
And first, which?
I'm good either day.
September 3rd and September 4th. I'm better on the 3rd. I could probably change the thing I have on the 4th, but if there's a, no problem in switching it, I prefer on Tuesday, the 3rd, September 3rd.
Okay, so the first public hearing will be September 3rd at 5:30 PM?
Second and final public hearing, I'm available on both days.
I would prefer the Wednesday. That Monday is the Space Coast League monthly meeting.
Anyone else?
So the second and final public hearing will be Wednesday, September 18th at 5:30 PM.
Correct.
September 18th.
Yes, sir. And as stated earlier in the meeting, the only other information item I have for you is May 1, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Titusville Performing Arts Center will be the 2019 student awards ceremony. Subject to your questions, that completes my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Now, city attorney.
We do have one card on my report, sir.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. And there's an admission, serious admissions from your report, and it has to do with February the 12th. It has to do with closed-door policy, blacklisting, code of silence. This is the only council that I know of, only government, city government, that I know of, that would not send people to homeowners associations and refuse to do that, refuse to meet with the public. And it's very noteworthy and something that will go down in history. So this is the only council that has removed a, or the last council removed a speaker by police action and not by the mayor action. Only council in the history of all of the city of Titusville. That was removal of me. And so we've got some special things that I think that the city manager's report should include, and of course, reminding him is that I've asked him to resign for his dishonesty, deception, and other things. So, thank you.
Sir, mayor, real quick, I'd like you to vote a confidence by council. I'm getting really kind of tired of hearing that.
I agree with you 100%.
Thank you very much.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion. I'm not sure how to make that, but make a vote. I'd like to make a vote of confidence for the city manager.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say to our city manager, I appreciate you so much, and I hope that you know, all of us, we meet with you constantly, one-on-one, the time that you give, me personally, that I know, educating me, running the city, I, you know, I'm getting more and more aware every Friday when I'm visiting a new department, and it just makes me more and more grateful. I also get to see a lot of other cities, see some of their issues that they're having, and that makes me more grateful. So I think we are very blessed in the city of Titusville, and I want to say thank you.
I'm going to jump in here. I've been on, this is my 13th year on council. I have never seen this community more happy with the council, with the city manager, and what is going on in the city of Titusville. We are making giant leaps forward. The economy is stabilizing. We hopefully will not have to go through some of the roller coaster rides we've had to go through in the past because we were basically a one-industry town. So I think you have done a fine job, and I'm most happy to say yes to it.
And we do have a wonderful staff, as you know, as you're traveling around the city.
Absolutely.
We have a phenomenal group, and as witnessed at the picnic, their morale is up. They feel happy about what they're doing for the city because they feel proud to live in the city.
I certainly didn't mean to leave the staff out, you're quite correct, but it's under your leadership that it's happening, and that's a big deal to me.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I certainly have to, I'm the new guy on the block, but I'm one of the oldest ones besides you. Bless me, I know. And I've seen, I've been on a lot of boards and a lot of committees, and it really is the executive that basically shows the character of what the organization should be. And I would say that Mr. Larisse, no doubt, I can't be fooled, I will tell you, he is focused on what we need him to be. And by the way, this council, I think, is one of the best in Brevard County as far as the character. One lady told me, she said, she washed us tonight and saw that we were focused on what they were doing. It was to treat people. And they said, we certainly were interested in what they had to say, and they were very appreciative. And that really just goes to everything that is happening here, but it's really the leadership of the city manager who is setting the tone, if you will. And I haven't heard anybody say anything negative about this city manager. I actually, it's kind of funny because when the whole process was going as far as trying to pick another city manager, I never thought that Scott was going to be that person. I just didn't know that much about him, but it just turned out that the previous council did an excellent job of picking the right person at the right time, and I'm very much appreciated, appreciative of everything that you are doing, and your staff, for sure.
And I would agree. I'm just going to say that.
Okay. Next official here. We have a motion in a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Like, sign. Not you. Passes unanimously. With that, anything else that?
Yes, sir.
Boy, you're lucky. I almost, I almost, he only reminded me three times.
Leave it to the attorney to ruin the good moment.
As you're probably aware, there are many lawsuits throughout the state being filed for ADA compliance by a couple of different plaintiffs. It is now been our turn. We received a complaint filed in federal court with regard to the
We received a complaint filed in federal court with regard to the ADA accessibility by an individual named Joel Price. We received this lawsuit Friday. We don't have another meeting until three weeks, could have skipped week, and we'll have to file an answer within 21 days. So that's why it's important that, had to add it to the agenda tonight to bring it to your attention. We do have coverage. There's a law firm of Roper and Roper PA who is currently handling 20 of these cases for various counties and municipalities at this time, very well-versed in this litigation. They've agreed to represent us for a rate of $150 an hour, which is a good rate. They're very knowledgeable. And at this-
That's great.
So at this time, I'm asking for a council's approval to retain the law firm of Roper and Roper to represent the city in this federal case.
Before we make a motion, can you briefly reference what, what it, what in particular they're talking about ADA?
Correct. Just the individual, Mr. Price, was from South Florida, wrote us a letter saying he may one day want a visit. He looked at the website, so there were some documents that didn't work with his reader, so those documents were inaccessible. We, of course, asked him, how can we accommodate you? We never heard again. We received the lawsuit. And this particular case, he alleges that certain things on our website are not accessible to him and his particular reader as being a vision impaired person, and that in his opinion, that violates the ADA, Title II and III. So he has filed that complaint. Again, this is one of many, many, Brevard County, Melmore and Cocoa, all throughout the state, colleges, these plaintiffs are notorious for filing these lawsuits.
All right. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
May I just allow you to retain that law firm, Roper and Roper?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. With that, I think we have-
We have a card on the city attorney's report.
Stan Johnston?
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville, Florida. Well, you've already made your decision. It's a little bit late for me to say anything, but, so, thank you. And remember about that $70,000 you all spent, we can't find what you did with it.
With, with that, I will declare this meeting adjourned.